You know, a number of goals of the municipality around ensuring healthy community and increasing the quality of life on Bowen. Helping people age in place, fostering creation of local employment. This wasn't anything that I thought Carrying Circle would have a big part in, in, uh, in making it happen on Bowen Island, but especially our home care companions, support people. This is a really incredibly impactful role that we play in the community. So, I get people, you know, Sue Ellen, you might talk about paramedicine, because I know you've mentioned it before. The paramedicine practitioners that will be involved in helping people get, um, attention on Bowen Island, that's after they get a referral from a healthcare person. So after the nurse sees them, after the doctor makes a referral, Carrying Circle is, is often interjects way before that happens. So people come to me and say, you know, "I haven't been to a doctor, my mother is having trouble, I don't know what to do next, where should I go, who should I call?" So we get people right at the foundational level of stress that say, "Well, what am I supposed to do now?" And so, we might be able to then say, "Look, we need to get the doctor to refer you to the paramedicine program, just in case you didn't know about that, or we need to get a referral for home support." Um, so we get people in on the ground to see you, and this is before they even knew that there was a program that could have helped them. Um, I just, there's been a couple of examples in the past month of three people who have been, people that should have been in the palliative care program, who had no idea they should have been in the palliative care program, who came into Carrying Circle to say, "Gee, I don't know what's going on with me, or I don't know what's going on with my mother, what should we do?" And Carrying Circle can jump right in there and go, "Look, we need to call palliative care here, there's some, there's some stuff going on." And before they even saw a doctor or a nurse, Carrying Circle got them connected with the programs they needed, and palliative care swooped in and helped them in their last, um, weeks on Bowen. I don't know what would have happened to the three people I'm thinking of if Carrying Circle hadn't have jumped in there, so, I don't know, that's just little personal examples of what's happening on Bowen. And in terms of, um, my five minutes are almost up, but I know you asked about what other communities provide programs like this that get core funding. It was difficult for me to come up with a lot of examples, because we span so many various programs, but I did, you know, in the package you'll see there, like with West Vancouver, they do give these, a three-year cycle grants to a whole list of organizations that I gave you, and all of them do some aspect of what we do at Carrying Circle. So lunch programs, information and advocacy programs, helping people with disability pensions, housing subsidies, things like that. I'm always doing that for people that are homeless or looking for rentals, things like that. Adult abuse and self-neglect, I've been involved in so many cases like that, where I've been able to report people who are, um, living, uh, in a dangerous situation at home, way before nurses or anybody else find about, out about it. It's a neighbor that comes to me to say somebody's living in squalor, or... Um, so North Shore Community Home, uh, Community Resources get funding from the municipality. Hollyburn Family Services, about seniors living at risk, they get funding from the municipalities. Anyway, you've already probably read that, the Driver Program gets funding through the municipality. And then I also found a little community like Bowen, someone chosen. Um, they have a seniors information and resource center, and they do very much what we do: educational seminars, workshops, one-to-one health navigation and support, uh, community potluck dinners, emergency social services, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the kind of work we do, and their municipality funds them. It's hard to compare us to too many other communities, because Bowen Island is really underserved when it comes to health services. We have, as you know, one doctor for 3,800 people, and another doctor that just works mostly by Skype and coming over occasionally, so, I don't know, I just think we fill a huge gap here on Bowen Island, and I hope you think about helping us alleviate the whole volunteer stress of one person applying for grants all the time to just keep our nose above the ground. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Family Place. Hello.
Hi, everybody. And Council, nice to see you. Um, so, I just want to give you a minute background on Family Place, just to bring some of our facts up to the surface, and, um, and then I have a list of other organizations that are funded by the districts of the city of North Vancouver, West Vancouver, et cetera. So, before I start, I'd like to say thank you very much for the funding that you've given us for over ten years for Family Place. It is part of our core funding, um, and without this funding, we would have to close our doors for almost four months of the year, so we really appreciate it. Bowen Island Family Place is the only program open to families with children pre-natal through six years of age. It is also not just a gathering place, but it is a, uh, resource center. So just as Colleen was saying, people come to Carrying Circle with issues and problems, often the place they go to is Family Place. Divorce, abuse, financial difficulties, problems with children, um, Family Place usually gets them first. Uh, it's also the only drunken program on a rural, isolated island. So, for, if you lived in the city, if you live in a larger community, there are other places to go to gather, there are other places to go for information. On Bowen Island, it's Family Place. It's also, uh, the place that new families moving to Bowen with their young children, it's their first introduction to Bowen Island, it also, um, it gives them a sense of community and a, uh, a place to ask questions, to get involved. You also know, because it's a stat I give out all the time, that Bowen Island has the largest number of children per capita under five in Canada, according to the 2011 census. According to the 2016 census, there are 160 children between the ages of birth and four years old.
Hundred and sixteen?
Hundred and sixty.
Sixty.
Family Place is the gathering place for young families, as an intended by families who make, um, who make all different kinds of choices for the other services they use in, in, in their, in their lives, so different preschools, anything, it's autonomous. Everybody goes there no matter what their other choices are. Um, and I think that it's essential, I think we could all agree, that it's essential for the quality of life for young families on Bowen Island. In other communities, um, so the communities that I've investigated so far, Whistler, the resort community of Whistler, funds Family Place. Gibson's is, uh, the Family Place is funded by the town of Gibson's. In West Vancouver, they have funded, uh, they have, they fund Family Place and they also give it space, and their model is the model that we actually chose, which is putting the youth center and Family Place in the same, uh, place, because it, it serves both needs. Um, and I also found out that the city of West Vancouver just funded a one-day-a-week Family Place in the British properties, uh, and that's new. In North Vancouver, there are five Family Places, and they're all funded by grants from, um, there's usually a umbrella organization, S-B-C-C is for Family Place, and Family Services of the North Shore funds two Family Places, one on Lower Lonsdale, and the other one in... I can't read my writing, sorry, but it is there. And North Shore Neighborhood House funds one, that's the John Braithwaite Family Center, and Park Gate Community Services fund two, um, Lonsdale and Park Gate. So, there is, um, a case to be made that other municipalities, cities, et cetera, do fund Family Places, and we are not asking for any more money than what we usually get, um, in a year from, from the municipality anyway. However, it would free up the time that it takes to write that application, and of course, if we don't get core funding, we're happy to write the application again in December, but it would really give us, it would free up some admin and management time, so that we could take that time and look for core funding elsewhere. So, thank you, any questions? Yes, no?
Yes, I was a little bit surprised when I read through your application that there was more specific examples of funding, because I'll be honest with you, I used several of the facilities in North Vancouver when we first moved to B.C., and I definitely had the impression that they were funded through some sort of local...
You're right.
So, I'm happy you brought some more examples out. Um, if, 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 uh, BCC, if it wasn't to be, certain house there, Family Place wasn't going, it, it closed its doors, where, where, who do you think would pick up the ball in something like this? Would it be something that we'd see as sort of another community with Bowen Rec, or, or within Recreation?
Bowen Rec, Recreation does fund Family Places, both in terms of giving them space, and in some communities, uh, funds the whole thing, so it comes under their auspices, yes. And as it stands now, there's a number of, uh, Bowen Island municipality gives funds, we get funds from the Ministry of Children and Family Development, we get funds from B.C. Gaming, and BCC picks up a lot of the expenses that we can.
Could it be a positive gift in writing those examples?
Sure, sure, I could forward them tomorrow, if that's okay.
Anyone else? Thank you.
A hundred and sixty children under five years of age, as the 216 census?
Yes, thank you. Between birth and four years of age. Thank you very much.
Okay. Colleen, Montessori School.
Hello? I'm not familiar with your face.
No.
My name is Maria Turnbull, I'm the current board president, have been for one year already, and coming into my second term. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to present here today. I have another board member with me, I can edit the graph in case I can't answer all the questions, um, but thank you to all of you. Our head teacher, executive director, Helen Davenport, is, uh, doing other work for the organization this evening, so couldn't be here. Um, so a little bit just about me, because I think it, hopefully will give you some insights into why Montessori School has put forward the application. Uh, I'll try not to reiterate too much of what you've read already. Um, I'm a past parent of two young boys who've been through the school, I've, I'm part of, I guess, the, uh, maybe most recent phase of growth on Bowen Island, in those statistics that, uh, Family Place shared, so appreciate that. You've made part of our case, perhaps. Um, moved here just over seven years ago, and, uh, saw both of our boys go through the school, and, uh, and I've decided to stay on as a board member. Uh, my day job is in the not-for-profit sector, and supporting nonprofits and societies to be strong, uh, to build their management and governance and systems and financial sustainability in service of their mission. And I bring that in with some relevance, so, um, as a, as a commuting family, uh, looking for flexible childcare for our family was really critical, uh, but also we wanted to equip our young ones with the educational-based curriculum to enter into the school system really effectively when they got there. Um, and that the, between the educational curriculum, the flexible options at the Montessori School, and the intentionality with which it has been designed as small, small by design and something I think that, um, really aligns with the municipality's, um, values and, and way of working and supporting our community in that way. So I share these three key reasons why we chose Montessori School, um, to offer up as explanation as to why the core funding from the municipality is really critical. It's critical because this small-by-design approach, uh, doesn't allow us to grow to be the scale of an organization that experiences major efficiencies. Uh, we have a head teacher, the school has chosen to invest in an administrator role, uh, we are currently reapproving that role every six months, because the school does not have the long-term financial sustainability to maintain that position, and it's with that position in mind that we have put forward this application. As outlined in the application, the school's mission is to offer a nurturing, inclusive environment where children of diverse ages, also one of the unique elements, from 30 months to six years of age, can engage with real purpose, uh, within the school. So that small-by-design challenge, uh, I offer up that the school has been around since 1995. We currently serve about 25 families per year, uh, and are told by all of our families the incredible impact we make on those young ones in preparing them for their next phase of growth. Uh, the fact is that, uh, the school's gotten by, uh, we've kind of just squeaked through in terms of keeping up with the management and governance and systems demands of any organization, uh, and, and really, we're, we're at the end of that. The community is growing, uh, as you all know, uh, at least the, the people that are affected by our services, that segment of the community, and those families have very diverse needs. Uh, they bring with them different diversity and culture, uh, that has stretched, has stretched the organization to learn, to grow and develop, and the fact is that with one full-time teacher who's being asked to provide before school care, after school care, um, there, there's only so far we can go on that model. And so the support from the municipality, the, the impact that we're looking for, we would like to, um, bring the school up to capacity. We have additional spaces that, um, that families are asking of us, uh, and it's, it's tough to, to align what the families are looking for with what is available, but we know we can do more with added administrative support, uh, to ensure a solid intake process as well as solid family experience once they're into the, into the school. We would like to add, we could offer one additional day, so again, the space has some possibilities, if the organization can build a stronger foundation, and again, in that area of management and systems in particular, which is what this administrative support would be there for. So I think those are the key things I wanted to highlight, but really curious, you know, we're newer at this table, I don't think that, I don't, I'm not sure, I can't answer the question as to when the school last had municipal support, uh, in the form of a grant. Um, we do receive support from Smoothstones, for, specifically for bursary support, which is immensely helpful to especially some of the newer families that may or may not have the financial capacity to, uh, support their young ones in preschool, um, as well as the Ministry of Child, Children and Family Development, our, and B.C. Gaming are our most critical funders, uh, but the municipality could play a really unique role in sustaining, uh, a care provider that's really providing complementary support to the other providers like Bowen Children's Center, uh, which is much larger and offers a different type of programming than the Montessori.
Thank you. Any, any from Council? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, Museum and Archives.
Oh, there's another newcomer to the audience. Actually, I can actually say I've been here 20 years now, so I am a citizen now.
You're getting took away.
Just within the last year. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Rob Thornton, the current president of the Museum and Archives. Bit of history with Museum and Archives, we've been around for, uh, 50 years, started in 67, um, and, uh, over the years, we've, uh, we've, we've felt obviously as an organization, we needed to preserve and educate future generations on our history, and, uh, and we've done that. I think, uh, you know, over the course of the years, we've, uh, purchased, uh, some property, we've erected a building, uh, we've published, uh, history books on Bowen Island, Irene Howard's History of Bowen Island, as well as Reflections, uh, we've, um, published other articles, uh, the history of, uh, the Union Steamship Company, and Vancouver's Summer Playground, as well as we've, um, issued, uh, history of Crippen Park and that, and helped researchers, uh, in writing books. I just wanted to, uh, you know, read certain excerpts from our application for core funding. "Our mission is to collect and record Bowen Island's history, uh, history catalog and index collected material, educate future generations in their heritage, and make historical information and material available to the Bowen Island community and researchers alike. Our scope is broad and includes processing historical and current materials according to prescribed national standards." And, and what I mean by that is, is that we've really upped our game, uh, in the last couple of years, in the sense that we've invested in, uh, computer equipment, uh, past-perfect software, uh, archival software, um, as well as we're getting input from the Archival Association of B.C., and, so we can bring up our standards to meet all national standards as well. So it's not a sort of a Mickey Mouse organization, it's, we're doing it right. The other thing too, as well, we're putting emphasis on protecting the information that we have, as well, um, with certain backups, virus protection, because making, uh, our collection and, and research available to people that might not be on island as well, um, the accessibility of our information can be done online as well, but we have to protect that, you know, from viruses, and we have to protect it with backups, what if something happened, the building burnt down, how does our entire history go with that? So these are the kind of precautions that we're taking, uh, for future generations. Uh, also, we have a diverse areas, uh, that we, we, we keep history on, as, as genealogy, land use, transportation, cultural activities, historic events, sports, school programs, clubs, and many others. We work extensively with students, seniors, and other individuals, volunteers, and other organizations. The public is always welcome to visit our facilities, and as you know, we're in the, starting to create a, a, a community space within our property as well, to make it more inviting and attractive for, for visitors, as well as, uh, Bowen Islanders alike. Some of the organizations that we're actively involved with, uh, on an annual basis, is the Bowen Island Discovery Learning Community, uh, the Community School, um, Camp Bowen Society, uh, was visually impaired. Matter of fact, we've been archiving, uh, their history in Braille, they've donated their collection to us, that makes it available, uh, for, for their membership. Bowen Heritage, we've been working with them, uh, three of our, as, as Maureen would know, three of our board members are, are, uh, part of the Heritage Commission. Um, we work, uh, a lot with, uh, Bowen Tourism, with, uh, there's a lot of tours, especially in the summer, but year-round as well, so we're working closer with the Bowen Tourism. Arts Council, historical photographic exhibits, um, Bowen Trails and Municipality, we provided photographs and narrative descriptions for the Trail Market Pilot Project at Sandy Beach and Corey Park. Bowen Businesses, we, again, we've, we've, you know, you, you take a look at the, the sea kayaking, you know, we've worked with them in providing the meals for the, the kayakers, to help raise money. Uh, we provided photographs for the Dallas Marina, um, and the Union Steamship as well. And anyways, I, that, there's a long list there, but I guess basically, um, you know, for why we need core funding is, is really, uh, core funding from the municipality is an essential element to guaranteeing the continuity of our program. The current request for 32,000 per year is to provide a portion of the existing staff's salaries, and other key, but lesser grants. But also, the municipal, municipal funds help leverage, um, other government agencies to provide us those grants, which also can contribute to the salaries and operating costs. So the bottom line is, um, you know, we, we get other grants, such as the gaming grant, which is 19,000, um, and that helps goes towards it, plus we get grants for the summer student special grants, but we have to pay, yeah, we have to pay a portion of that as The municipal grant is the single most important source of our funding, uh, for our staff. Multi-year funding will provide certainty to our staffing hours and availability to the public and continuity of services we provide. Every year we provide the effectiveness of our communities, every year we evaluate the effectiveness of our community service by the number of hours we are able to open on a regular basis. The volume of materials that we are able to collect and process, our ability to respond to the research requests, and the amount of outreach and educational programs we are able to deliver. Um, yes? Am I going on too long here?
You're just returning.
Just a while ago. Okay. Okay. Bottom line is, is that many museums and archives are seen as a municipal function, and, and you get, receive a amount of, uh, funding. So, I'll leave that with you, you've got the, some of the examples I provided as well. Okay, any questions?
None? Thanks, Rob. Now, I must apologize to the Cause people, I skipped right over you, I had notes written all around you, so...
Oh, you were going in alphabetical order.
I was going in alphabetical order, except I looked under my notes and I said, "Oh, we're going along quite quickly here." And I said, "Oh, no wonder, just skipping people." So, uh, Cause, who'd like to come on up?
I'm not going to be left behind because we deal with four-legged. Good evening, I'm Deborah Foresty, and I'm Vice President of Cause, and Carol Ricknottan, who's been a director, I think, forever from the beginning, is with me, and unfortunately Suzanne couldn't be here because she's out of province. So, here we go. Uh, on behalf of Cause, I'd like to explain how the Bowen community benefits from our work and why we should be considered eligible for your multi-year core funding. Cause has been working voluntarily for the community for over 17 years. During that time, we have trapped hundreds of cats with spay and neuter. These cats could have multiplied into thousands by now without our intervention. It's hard to believe that within seven years, one single pair of intact cats and their offspring can produce up to 420,000 kittens. That's more than a hundred times the human population of Bowen today. By the time our municipal government was formed, Cause already had the feral cat situation under control. Legend has it that until Cause started trapping, neutering, and setting up feeding stations, the locals spent their Saturday evenings at the dump shooting feral cats. This type of activity would be unacceptable nowadays, and the municipal government would be forced to take action whenever new scare was reported. Instead, the community automatically turns to Cause for help. Our activities complement and supplement the work of the Bylaw Office. The chief rationale for ongoing funding is that Cause did not exist. If, if we did not exist, the municipality would have to set up a mechanism to deal with feral cats. Recently, there was a widely reported case in Cornwall, Ontario, where a single street has been taken over by about 50 feral cats that are breeding rapidly and depositing cat feces and urine everywhere, and the local authorities now have to deal with that situation. Other rationales are that our entire community, which has a high level of ownership of companion animals, benefits from being as well-educated as possible about animal welfare. People are also happier if they are less stressed about the welfare of their pets, especially amid financial difficulties. Our Vet Bill's Assist Program provides funding for those in our community who are financially challenged and unable to pay to get their pets attended to. There are government-funded specialty groups in place to help our human neighbors in need, but our four-legged and furry companions get forgotten. Cause tries to fill that void by encouraging the less fortunate members of our community to come to us for both emotional and financial support when their pets are sick. We actively work to educate our community about healthy, sustainable humane guardianship and stewardship of all animals. Our educational projects include leaflets about the danger of leaving pets in hot cars, and cruelty of using slow-acting poison to kill vermin, which can also kill the animals that prey on them, such as the cats, dogs, owls, and eagles. Our president contributes a column to the Undercurrent, and we educate through the social media. We recently held a free event called "Ask an Animal Expert," to which we brought two animal professionals, a holistic veterinarian, and the head of an organization in North Vancouver that deals with feral cats, and we will be offering more free educational events of this nature in the future. Every year, our small group of seven or eight directors donates enormous amounts of time to fundraising. We apply for several smaller grants, and we devote many hours to auctions, raffles, 50/50 drawers, Christmas craft fairs, and so on. As in any volunteer organization, individuals get burnt out by this repeated toil. We have often been successful in our grant applications to the municipality, and we're extremely grateful. However, there is a toll of submitting repeated applications. The assurance of continued support from the Muni for the next four years would permit us to focus more forcefully on our mission and recruit new volunteers, secure in the knowledge that less time would be, have to be devoted to completing grant applications. As a result, we would anticipate being able to assist more islanders who face financial difficulties and to expand our domestic and wild animal education program. Thank you for considering Cause as a candidate for a grant. And that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, that's a pretty good, your submission very soft, it's fine.
And the update was purely because we were not sure if the boxes, the PDF boxes had actually been out correctly, so that's all it was.
Your requests over the years have been consistently 2,000, 3,000 or so, and, and it'd be funded for, for the six years, so if you were to be funded at five, six, or seven thousand, is it primarily expansion of services to, that you reduce the funds?
Yeah, expansion of services, and primarily trying to really, um, encourage people who have, uh, financial issues to not let their pets go too far, too long and too far without help, because then of course it exacerbates and exponentially increases the issues. And that we try to, um, publicize to the fact that they can come to us, so it's completely confidential, and we just want to make sure that they are in a good space and their pets are looked after, so, and we see a continuing need for that, obviously with the way finances are going today, in general with everybody, and, and vet bills are going through the roof like everything else, so it's, that's really, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
One second.
Certainly.
Maybe I've missed it in here, was there any examples of similar... Maybe I've missed it in here, was there any examples of similar organisations that are municipal?
I believe there is in the core, in the actual application. One specific that comes to mind is PAF, Pacific Animal Foundation in North Vancouver, doing this, how they fund things like spay neutering and other.
How much of your portion of your budget goes to spay neutering?
When we first started out, obviously, there was a huge issue and I think luckily it has reduced. I think it's now, because the feral cat population is under control, we're now into encouraging just general family members or community members as well as the feral cats that seem to get dumped, which, you know, we're just going through a situation right now that the muni's aware of, that came out of nowhere and was a threat that would explode again. So, yeah, so we're sort of need to know that we are able to fund that and also encourage community members to be responsible about if they do have intact cats roaming, that that's going to cause a huge issue. And so, we try to educate them if we find out about something like that going on, we try to very diplomatically just kind of say, hey, you know, maybe it'd be a great idea if your cat was spaying, and we can help with that. So, we're not saying go spend that money, we'll help you do that.
Can we, can we feral cats, are you caring for them? It's a twenty percent.
Yeah, there's ones at Daddies. That's the name. Yeah, it's probably about twenty overall because there's one feeding station, the second feeding station, the hands and she has a neighbour. We've sort of tried to curtail them a little bit just by virtue of physical location to an area that's a little more manageable in terms of volunteers having to go out and take care of a few different feeding stations. So, being a little more efficient.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Turinog.
Good evening and thank you for your time this evening. I think that what the Turinog Theatre School Society has to offer the community is fairly well outlined in the application, so I won't reiterate that. But I have a couple of questions. In the staff report that was published online, I see staff has recommended the Arts Council and the Museum and Archives for core funding, but having watched the proceedings thus far, I assume that the other half dozen organisations on the list are still under consideration for funding?
Oh, it's council's decision, we were just going by the criteria and the policy itself.
Right, yeah. And I have another question about that. In the, in the staff report, the only mention of the Turinog Theatre School Society is that the Turinog Theatre School Society provided specific examples of other municipal funding of organisations. However, the examples that were provided were much different than their core mandates. And I guess, is there anyone here who can be more specific about that? Any value?
Well, I think it was fairly clear in the staff report and I'm actually not here to debate it myself, this is a council decision for this evening, so I just provided the information.
So, so what I have here isn't the staff report then, is there more detail in the staff report?
You have the staff report, Chuck.
So, there's just that one sample?
I'm not sure you'd want to waste your five minutes talking to me, what you'd like to do is present to council.
Yeah, well, I think it's worth pointing out that those of us who are actually actively involved in presenting programmes don't have a lot of time for the, for the grant application gambit. But on seeing that, I did look up one example, which is probably the most familiar to me and perhaps to a lot of you, which is Presentation House in North Vancouver. And this is from the Canada Revenue Agency Charities Division, their annual report. And in describing their ongoing programmes, they say, "Develop, produce, present theatre, music and dance programming for children, youth and adults. Offer classes in theatre, music and dance to the community. Maintain rehearsal and performance space for local nonprofit organisations." Is that similar?
No.
Offer performance space for local and touring theatre companies, high school drama groups, musicians and dance companies. Engage local youth in development of new theatre productions, all of which we do at the Turinog Theatre School. So, I would say that was similar. And that's the only one that I had time to look into in detail. The other examples presented were just looking around at other neighbouring municipalities and seeing organisations that offer similar services that are funded. And I noticed that Presentation House receives municipal funding equal to more than their occupancy costs in the building. And what we were suggesting the municipality contribute was twenty percent simply of the occupancy cost. And again, the value is that, you know, if we can manage to pay off a mortgage on this building, which the society is committed to doing, then this building will be available to the community for one dollar per month for the next ninety-nine years, which seems like a good idea. And so, I would dispute the statement that the examples were much different than the core mandate of the Theatre School. So, beyond that, if there are any questions that I can answer?
I have a quick question, can you just elaborate a little bit more on the mortgage that you were talking about?
Well, the Theatre School Society has a ninety-nine year lease on the building on Kate's Hill. And the terms of the lease are that if the society will pay off the mortgage on the construction cost of the building, then the building is available for one dollar per month for the duration of the.